We're gonna call the meeting to order and we're gonna do a rule call. Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Toni Corpe.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Joanne Smith.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Bruce Raboy.
Here.
Roxanne Schockstedt-Dich. Here.
Beth Shimon.
Here.
And we have no students, so let's all stand your heads.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion for to approve the agenda as presented? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Election of Officer Secretary. Could I call for nominations for electing a secretary for a school board, which is a new position?
So it doesn't have to be somebody that doesn't have a position?
No, it can be anyone.
It doesn't have to be. Okay.
I'll move.
For who called for nomination? Get the nomination.
Okay, I nominate Joanne. Sorry, Joanne.
It's okay.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay. And, oh, we don't have a listing here of... Do we have to have a motion in a second?
Yeah, you have to have a motion in a second.
Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
For having Joanne as the secretary. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Joanne, for being our secretary.
Yay, Joanne!
Thank you, Joanne.
Chair, before we move to the open forum, I need to add an item to the action items for 1F. The verification of votes came in today from the county. The primary is on August 13th. The school board will need to review the results and have a resolution moved to approve the votes.
Okay, so it's to approve it, not to certify it. It's called approve the vote?
Yep.
Okay.
Verify the findings of vote.
Okay, so we'll consider that as item 1G.
F. F? G, sorry, G.
G, because 1F we already have.
I know.
Yeah, we do page two.
Right, I'll just ignore me.
Okay, I'll ignore you.
Yeah, whatever.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so now we go back. And I will now... Okay, we are now at the open forum. Do we have anybody who has signed up for open forum? No. Okay, we'll now move on to committee and administrative reports. Principal Tate, do you have a report?
No, that's okay. So the board has requested that they have...
Beth, could I ask you to use some...
Oh, sorry. The board has asked that the directors for ISD 361 do report outs. So we'll have six presenters tonight. Each presenter will have the option to determine how they want to present. Some may do digital, others may do a template or just follow their same platform that they've used before. So it may look different for each presenter at this time.
Okay, so what will be your platform?
I'm just gonna talk to you guys today because I'm just not ready for that yet.
That's fine.
We will have to give you a microphone then.
We're all ears.
Okay, so first I'd just like to thank the custodians for all the hard work they're doing to get our building ready. They're starting to come together and look good. We have open house on August 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 at Falls Elementary School. So we need to be ready to rock and roll them and they've been working really hard, so we appreciate them. So we have a lot of things going on at Falls Elementary School that are exciting. We are reestablishing our PBIS team to focus on common language and getting back to that proactive approach to discipline. Our team kinda went away after COVID just because so many things kinda kept piling up. So we're gonna get back to reestablishing that team and getting into that. We will reestablish our leadership team. We used to have a leadership team again after COVID. That kinda went to the wayside, so we'll reestablish our leadership team this year. And then, one thing that will be brand new for us this year at Falls Elementary, and I'm sure Beth will talk to it a little bit too when she talks about the calendar, is we want to do a stagger start for kindergarten. And we wanna do that because we wanna allow for some more individualized conversation with families. And we also wanna take that time to take our kindergarten students and give them their reading and math assessments so we can kinda get a good baseline before they come in and it can be a less distracting environment for them. And then, when they do start, the teachers can just really focus then on routines and that sort of thing. So our proposal is actually to take the first two days of school and we'll have individual conferences that we schedule with parents and they'll come in and meet with teachers. And the teachers will go over things with them like attendance. They'll go over things with them like how we teach reading and how they can kinda help their child to get a leg up at home so we can form a partnership. They'll talk about PBIS. They'll talk about those sorts of things. They'll get any individual concerns that families might have and just be a much more private environment. They'll still be welcome and we still encourage them to come to open house and they can drop off their supplies and engage in all of that community stuff that we have happening. But we just thought this would be another way to, one, get that data in a less distracting environment and really have some one-on-one conversations with families. So that's... So they will actually start on that Thursday of the first week, the kindergarteners. So we have a letter that's ready to go home after this board meeting to families, just kinda explaining the process to them. And then they'll sign up for a time during the open house. So, does he... Any questions about that, since it's new?
We'll start on this end. Any questions?
No, Missy's great idea.
Tina?
Yep, nope.
Bruce?
Thank you for that, Missy. Thank you.
Dale?
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
I saw more. That was new. Yeah, here I went to...
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we also... I think I've already kinda talked about our MTSS structure, but you know, this year we're really focusing on doing kind of a double dose with that K through 2 grade level so we can be really proactive there and reduce those intervention populations down below. And so we will have staff pushing into small groups in K through 2 in addition to our win time, which is what we call our 1I Need Time. And so we hope to see a lot of benefits through that. And then we also are lucky enough to have Jody do some coaching this year. And so she'll go in and she'll work with teachers and work with kids and just kinda model evidence-based strategies and student engagement strategies and some different strategies with explicit instruction. So we think that will be really helpful and beneficial, too. So we also are doing writing training this year and that's kind of our culminating piece of letters. Writing was like the last component to cover and we're doing what's called Think SRSD. And really, it's a framework that utilizes exemplars and models and you kinda... You take a... And it's a framework that you can fit with any curriculum, so it's not like another thing teachers have to do. It's maybe you read this story or you read this science article and then you start by taking the kids through that article. You find what they call the gist, which is the main idea. So then eventually in your day, you just start finding the gist of everything you read. So you're really working on that comprehension skill with your kids throughout the day, too. And then you take that and you build on that model and you set goals with kids with what they call little reading rockets and they color in their rockets when they have each component based on different graphic organizers. So I think it's gonna be really good. I think it will be a lot at first, but I think that once the teachers get going in it and get comfortable with it, because it is new, they're gonna find they really love it. A lot of teachers that are implementing it have found that their kids have really become much more independent writers. And it was actually something that was developed and started in a special education classroom is where this process started. And that's where they were doing it. But then they found out like, oh, general education students can really benefit from these strategies, too. And so it's just really taken off. So we've got that going on. And then, you know, we'll continue to focus on explicit instruction and student engagement, utilizing a lot of Anita Archer's stuff. And Lisa and I will be collaborating about a district-wide community service day. And we're gonna move that to May to just give us a little bit more time to plan. But we do plan on doing something district-wide and having, you know, preschool through 12th grade involved in that. So we're pretty excited about that. And we have some other ideas of collaborations to come, but we might need a little bit of time to think about some of those things. So homecoming week is October 4th and we'll have a parade and picnic. We'll do the off-school picnic again this year. Hopefully the bears stay home for our picnic. Don't join us, I will. See, you never know. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Okay, was there on this end, Joanne, questions? Ken, Dale? I just wanna say, I think that the... The doing the gist of things is not only helpful in reading and writing, but I do think that possibly emotional behavioral assistance would help when you use that concept of getting the gist of it. So great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I just have one thing.
Yes.
I wanted to mention, on the community-wide day where you involve everybody, maybe if you mention it to the school board ahead of time, too, maybe it's something we can get involved in as well.
Perfect. Thanks. Lisa?
Thank you. I used to... This is my motive presentation. We were having a little technical difficulty earlier, so I made it just be reading it. We'll see. Fingerprints. So, thank you. Okay, it worked. Yay, here we go. All right, celebration wins recognition. We just, again, we wanna thank our wonderful custodial staff as well. Schools looking wonderful. They're working hard every day. When I get here in the morning until I leave in the evening, they are working. And so I just wanna make a big shout out to our custodial staff. Is this... Yep.
Yep.
All right. Some key focus projects and initiatives in alignment with our strategic plan. So right away, I will jump in. We are... We too are rejuvenating our PBIS program here at Falls High School. That stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. We call it Bronco Power. And we were fortunate enough to go to a refresher training this summer and we found our old documents, which actually were originally established. And so here's our logo, Bronco Power, proud, optimistic, welcoming, engaged, and respectful. And there's something really powerful about this statement, these statements. If a child doesn't know how to read, we teach them. If a child doesn't know how to multiply, we teach them. If a child doesn't know how to drive, we teach them. If a child doesn't know how to behave, what do we do? We teach them? We punish them? So this is the whole premise of Bronco Power, being proactive. We want to set the expectations, model the expectations, and then also reinforce when we see kids doing the things that we are asking them to do. So we're very excited about getting that going again. We are also reviewing and updating our discipline practices. And this is a visual that helps me really talk about that a little bit more. I just call it a balanced approach. And again, we'll have a big focus on our positive behavior support. We know that there are behaviors that have to have consequences. We do know that. But we really want it to be more balanced. And nestled in here is restorative practices and those will be things that will be coming along as we get our PBIS program up and running.
This is Eric.
Okay, so we're back. And then we are... We too are establishing our leadership team. This will be made up of department chairs who meet one to two times a month. We want to meet with them, to collaborate, to problem solve, to share ideas on improvement because we all know when we roll the boat together, we grow faster and farther. So that is... I'm very excited about that and it's all connected to culture and climate. So another part of our strategic plan, implementing data-driven teaching practices and staff collaboration to increase student academic success. We will be having fast-bridge screening and intervention training at the beginning of the school year. It'll be next week. And this really supports our MTSS process. And I just... I really thought this visual was very powerful. So the screening will really help us figure out where all the kids are at in reading and math. And I know they do this at the elementary school, but we are doing it at the high school level as well. We get an idea of where kids' strengths are and where their struggles are. And then the intervention training will also help us as content area teachers, how can we help the kids that are in our classrooms for 50 minutes a day in those core areas? So... And this just really illustrates, we do differentiated core. We have kids for 50 minutes. We're teaching core subjects and we're also helping those kids who might be struggling or challenging those kids who might really need some extra help. And then we see tier 2 and that's where we have 5% to 15% of the kids who are gonna need some extra help. And then we have a smaller population that are going to need more intensive help and we call that tier 3. Let's see if we can get back there. There we go. All right. I'll be establishing an MTSS data team. We'll meet every week. And we will examine academics, absences, behaviors, and other factors that are becoming barriers to students being successful. And then, in addition to that, the teachers will be working on some goals that focus on reflecting and exploring evidence-based teaching practices, doing some refining of those practices in tier 1. Okay. So increasing family and community engagement in student learning and school experiences through improved communication and collaboration. That's also a strategic initiative. I will be doing a weekly bulletin. It's called the Bronco Bulletin. It's a weekly update on social media. And it'll just be little snapshots into what's happening in Falls High School. So one of the things that I think about with our community is not everybody's connected to the schools and they don't know what's happening over here. And it might have been a long time before, you know, since they've been in school or maybe had a child in school or someone they know. So these will be a lot of photographs of things happening in the classroom, descriptions from teachers. Teachers will send me things. I will go in classrooms and we're just gonna really highlight some of the awesome things that are happening here. We'll also highlight our staff so that our community can get to know our staff members as well. We also will have an initiative to encourage and support connecting our students to our community and agencies. And we have a great example of that coming up. We have a career exploration class. Charlie Anderson will be teaching that through Rainy Lake Medical Center. Kids will be able to go and explore all the aspects of the medical field and we'll have some of those personnel people coming in to visit the school. And then the kids will actually get to go over and check out all different areas from accounting to anesthesia. So we will... We hope to have more opportunities like that for our kids. Again, we're doing our homecoming planning, which is a really community-wide celebration. And then our district-wide community service day in the spring will be really fun for Missy and I to collaborate on. And thank you for maybe getting involved in that as well. So barriers and problem solving. I just think change. Change is exciting and it can also be uncomfortable. Can be, you know, people don't always know what to expect. So when we talk about change, there's a lot of excitement, enthusiasm, and there's also just a little, you know, anxiousness that goes along with it. So I just think right now, it's just, you know, the changes are going to become opportunities. All right, and just some other exciting things going on. There's so many things. Our ALC, the curriculum is changing from Odyssey Ware, which has been used from the outset of the program. It's switching to Edmenta, which is a more interactive and challenging and up-to-date curriculum. So Thane Grewatz and Annie Sullivan will be going to training on that and get up to speed on our credit. We use it for credit recovery as well, as well as the main curriculum over there. CTE, who knows North Star and Perkins. I've been invited to take over Mr. Everson's position. He had a three-year board position with two years left. So I went down and I met the board and they are just wonderful and they're gonna help me along in understanding career and technical opportunities that we can bring to our school. And so I think actually one of the members is going to see me next week here at Falls. Good. So I'm hoping to learn a lot more about that. We just received a grant for a pilot project for 7th and 8th graders. It's called Exploring Career Pathways. And we have Sarah Peterson who will be teaching that class, piloting it to see what we think of it and if we like it, the curriculum is ours to keep so we can use it going forward. We are piloting something called Smart Pass. It is an electronic pass system. Our dean of students, Mr. Rwanda, will be running that program. What it is, if you think about the old paper pass system, teacher needs... Or a student needs to use the restroom, fill out a paper pass. They go, well, this is an electronic version of that. What's really nice about it is that we can track data. We can track how many minutes per day, hours per week, a child is missing class time. And when we think about attendance, we think about, okay, a child is not in school. Sometimes they're in school, but they're not in class. And so that is also gonna help us shore that up, keeping kids in class, which is a priority. We have some AI training coming up before school starts. AI is a really hot topic right now and we, as educators, need to learn all we can. We have to stay ahead of the game because the kids know it and we need to learn it and also use how the... You know, how we can use the tools as teachers and educators. And then we are also going to be piloting Character Strong in our middle school, 6th through 8th. It's a curriculum I know that Missy uses at Falls Elementary. They do have a middle school and high school version of it. But before we spend the money, we wanna make sure it's a good fit. So they're allowing us to pilot it for three months and give us guidance along the way. And then we can decide, do we like it enough or not? And then explore something else.
Is this something you incorporate into an existing class or...?
Yes, we will. I'm going to be meeting with the middle school teachers. We don't have anything in the structure of our day right now, like advisory or homeroom. But I will select three teachers, three teachers from each grade level to teach it in one of their classes.
Gotcha.
So it'll be a regular.
Good.
Thing. Okay. All right, and I think that's it unless... And then I just have the hammers here when we're ready for the hand pose. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal West. And now, does anyone have any questions? We'll start on this end. No questions? Okay, thanks. And now we'll hear from Maintenance Transportation Director, Mr. Holt.
Sure, that's a hard act to follow.
She's had more practice.
First, I'd like to thank the board for the support that you guys gave us before to go ahead with Nexus's plan to look for the... Look into things at the school and to go ahead and all the work you all did on the record. I'm really excited about it. It's gonna be fun. And I just didn't get a chance, I don't know, the other night to thank you. I do know. And I'm looking forward to it. I thank Missy and Lisa for thanking my staff. It means a lot coming from the principals, you know, and I'm gonna pass that on to them tomorrow. I'd just like to thank... We've been shorthanded and we got some new faces, but they've been doing a great job. You know, they're doing a real good job. Jen Thompson and Tom Fuller have been kinda running and learning as they go and they've been doing an awesome job with their maintenance and taking care of things and getting the boilers ready and trying to get caught up on things as we go. So we're getting there. Floors are almost done. We just have the cafeteria floor over here and that's it. So Norm takes pride in his waxing and he likes to show everybody his jobs and he does a great job.
I noticed right when I walked in the door how shiny it was.
Yeah.
I did. That's good. Yeah.
Nice and deep, it looks like you can step right in it. So I just, I guess I can't say it unblown. They're a great crew. We got a great crew coming up this year. We got some real good people. We're looking, of course, for short, looking for more. We always need the best, everything else. But I'm excited with this new crew. We got a good group of people, men and women that we got. So the only other thing I got is the roof on the bus barn is gonna start soon. That'd be a quick project for us all. That's it, sorry.
Thank you.
It's like a letdown after.
It was great. Okay, thank you. And now Community Ed Director, Beth Slutinsky.
I had already, before I got the email today, I had already planned on... I'm doing our year-end report for Community Ed. And so, of course, today I had it all plugged in really nice and ready to go and then I realized that when the rec commission dissolved, clearly I took over all the rec programs. So I had to quick contact him and say, hey, I need numbers. So it's kinda scribbled. So our adult programming, we had 2,495 people go through our program. And that's what any type of... We had co-ed softball, we had hockey, any defensive driving. So that's a really good, solid number. So our pre-K, so the number that we put to the state for our pre-K program is not who's enrolled in the program, it's who does the activities. So like, we do the haunted hallway.
Yeah.
So any extra evening thing that we do, that's the number that we submit to the... Or to the state. So pre-K, we have 306 0-4-year-olds. We had 123 grades 6th through 8th and we had 368 adults. An adult is 19 and over. We will be doing the haunted hallway again this year. It's always a very good activity. I think last year it was like 24 tables that people participated. And I don't even have to advertise anymore. There... I already got an email today about, hey, are you gonna do it and what date? So I think when BAC is quit doing it, I think our community really liked it. So we do it in conjunction with the Rainy Lake Medical Center's Halloween haunted hallways or whatever they have there. So it's a very good evening. Our youth programming, again, this is anything where we do classes or our ball, any kind of export. So we had 0-4-year-olds. We had 58 people participate. Grades K through 5, we had 1,065. Grade 6 through 8, we had 280. Grades 9 through 12, we had 208. And adults 19-plus, we had 74. I mentioned our adult programming. Our Adults with Disabilities, we had 704 adults participate in activities throughout the year. Our prom is always a big one. Thursday, we just went, took a shopping trip and we couldn't have... We had to cut an off because that many people signed up to go. So we had to say, we had to actually turn away a couple because they didn't register early enough because the bus was full. So it was a bus full. We ate at the Village Inn and the Village Inn did a phenomenal job with our big crew. And they just loved it. They all shopped to their little heart's desire and they went to a restaurant, they sat down, they were so happy. It wasn't like a fast food restaurant. It was like, it was just... It's a bucket filler. Every time with doing Wilson out, I have to step up and help a lot more. And you're having a bad day, volunteer at one of their events and it's an absolutely bucket filler. So we did have a couple of special events. One is we moved to a block party One is we moved to a block party and we do that conjunction with Kutaska and then Cape and then Community Ed. We're doing that September 14th and we are doing that at Cary Park. And we do a free lunch, we have games, we have little tables set up. Last year we had Grandpa Magic, we have the kids, we have a rock decorating table. And if the kids do not want to bring their rocks, then we have the older kids go put them around the communities that have different sayings on them. Sometimes businesses say, hey, could you bring them here? One of the banks last year said, could you put them out in our, in our, like around our door so people could see them? So that's going to be September 4th. And we're still getting that all planned out. But it will be at Cary Park. And another special event that we had, that I did not do, I do have the numbers, but I realized that was kind of up here. We, the city actually contacted me last spring and asked me if I was interested in doing a job fair. And we did a job fair last year. It blew up. It was, it was so well welcomed by the staff. They were so excited about it. Two of the high school teachers, I think three of the high school teachers actually did some surveys with their kids, didn't know what they wanted to learn about. And so we tried to pinpoint, like, Wild Dean was one of them. We tried to get somebody for Wild Dean. The city was great to work with with that. And we invited Little Fork to come and Little Fork brought over 80 kids. Plus, we had over 200 of our kids, whether they were duplicate kids. But I know that the city saw an increase in their applications. And it was a very good event. So we will do that again this spring. So those numbers aren't in there. So that's a special event. And then we do National Night Out too. I don't really count numbers for National Night Out. I think that's just more of a PR to have the school out there doing something with law enforcement and everything. The back-to-school mailer is at the post office. I think he must spread it over. That is such a huge, that takes weeks to do. I know it doesn't sound like it should, but it does. And I have to give a shout out to Angela Schuler. She's organized, she just does it. She doesn't need me to be there for her, she just does it. So she's a rock star and really, it's not me that should be thanked. It's, it's really her. She, she does all of it. And so did Michelle Hopkins, prints out our labels and makes sure that the private information that goes into the envelopes, she takes care of that. So it is out. The only thing that I wanted to bring up that we didn't include in it is class lists. And the reason why we didn't is because we only got one class list. And I made the decision not to include it because I thought if we included it, then there's going to be confusion on why there was only one class list in there, not all the rest of them. But I've been pushing on Facebook. When people ask, look on our website. I really think this is kind of the year to push people to look at our website and get more information on our website.
Do you mean the supply list?
Yeah, the class, yeah. I'm really thinking that that's going to be kind of initiative this year is to try to push that stuff out on, on our social media because we know parents use Facebook. Like, we know. So that's it, any questions?
Joanne, question?
I just have one regarding the haunted hallways. Are you saying it's like the same night as Rainy Lake Medical Center? Will you be laying that at all so people don't have to?
Yep, we do. We do. We start usually an hour before them.
Okay. I know it was just a, I have four plus my sister. So it was a lot for me to try to get through here and then over there. But I love that there's always 20 events. I just don't like when they're at the same time.
And honestly, the haunted hallways is geared towards the younger kids. And the older kids are geared towards, that's kind of how, that's their setup. We use the haunted hallways as an ECFE event.
Okay.
So we use those numbers there.
Okay.
Okay, Dale? Bruce? Besska? I would like to say, Beth, that anything for career-related things, I hope people will also remember to try to encourage. And this probably is for at least West program as well, but the group home career, to be a group home provider, DSP direct service provider is an important thing. It's something that the community uses a lot. So I would hope that somehow we can get that.
Thursday, I talked to one of the houses. And they actually want to have a table at the career fair that we do in April because they said the same thing. So that's already in the works?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Activities Director, Mr. Ringhofer?
Just want to thank everybody who had a little piece of the puzzle with the referendum passing last week. Obviously, that's exciting news on our end with the stadium and Bronco Arena getting things looked at. So that's, that's great. Of course, we've got the renaming of the football field coming up a couple of Fridays away on the 30th. Remember, the football game starts at 6 o'clock, not 7 o'clock. We started pre-selling tickets to hopefully avoid the congestion that we had for game one last year. We had people not being able to get in the game until nearly halftime. So I know we've got, I talked to Jody at the end of the day and she said we're selling tickets like crazy already. And I put it out like at noon. So if people are out there and want to come and pre-buy tickets so that they don't have to wait in line to buy tickets, they can stop here at the high school office to take care of that. Of course, you guys signed the proclamation with Stuart and everything. We're getting the program put together. And it sounds like we've got things kind of settled and hope we're all heading in the right direction that we're going to get everything done for that evening. Of course, saying that, sports started last Monday. Lots of kids in the sports, of course, football, volleyball, girls swimming and diving, and then of course, cross-country. So volleyball had a scrimmage today in Esco. The JV was in Proctor, the varsity was in Esco. The girls varsity was in Hibbing on Saturday. The boys' football team hits the Deer River on Saturday morning for their scrimmage. And every team is in action next week, starting with volleyball here on Monday night. A little early start for Roseau as they come over. We don't remember the last time we played Roseau in volleyball, but they'll be coming over, 6 o'clock start for the JV. One of the projects Purple Pride is working on, I want to get you up to speed, as long as we're getting sports stadiums first up. They are interested in buying basically a windscreen for the stadium to give it a little color, a little flair along the fence, by the scoreboard on that end and then by the concession area. So you'll see some, I don't know how soon they'll be able to get here. I just got the quote today and got asked the guy, well, how soon can we get it? Anyway, Purple Pride's looking into that. So you'll see some hopefully purple windscreen with stampede and Home of the Broncos down behind the goalpost on the end zone end facing in. So they're working on that project. So along with hopefully sprucing up the stadium, they'll also have the fence looking a little sharper and a little more colorful and those kinds of things. Let's see, video. Minnesota State High School League has asked us to show a video here this evening. Membership is about six minutes long. So I hope this is going to work.
Do you want to grab Mike from across the hall and I can start on my report?
Sure.
Okay, Superintendent Chomol, please.
So I will try and be quick. We always know that August meetings are long as we get ready for the school year. So the first thing that I just want to talk about, we've done a lot of gratitude, but we do know that the referendum did pass. Both questions went into. I want to really recognize the community for coming out and voting, regardless of how they voted. I want to recognize that people showed up at our polls and invested in having their voice heard.
I also want to look for more information coming from the league.
I also want to recognize the immense amount of work that was put in behind the scenes. And that goes from our school board members to our former superintendent Grover, to our Vote Yes campaign, our school staff, our students, and just our community overall. There is a number of people that really stepped up to the plate to volunteer to get information out, took time off of work to go to other organizations and present. And I just really want to make sure that everybody knows on behalf of the district that we are appreciative, regardless of the role that you played. We want to thank you.
Go ahead, Tim.
Hi, I'm Merrick Martins, Executive Director here at the Minnesota State High School League. And thank you so much for taking time to watch this video. The Minnesota State High School League is a dynamic partnership of more than 600 schools reaching all communities and corners of the state. Our mission is to provide educational opportunities in fine arts and athletics for all students. The 2023-24 school year was a great one for the league. As we look ahead to the upcoming school year, there are some exciting things that we are working on. You may not realize the league is operated as a 10th through 12th grade organization. But now, the league is considering bringing all ninth grade participants and contests under the governance of the league. That would make us a 9th through 12th grade organization. This would allow all ninth grade participants valuable insurance coverage in the event of injury or a concussion. Welcoming ninth graders in this way would be a monumental change and one that is overwhelmingly supported by our member schools. A change like this will require action from member schools. So look for more information coming from the league in the beginning of the 24-25 school year. To be fully engaged members of the league, our schools are required to commit to following all league rules. These rules have been collectively established and are critical to ensuring safe experiences, equitable opportunities, and fair play for our participants. That's why we continue to expand our efforts to share and inform all schools about the requirements and expectations so everyone can do their part. As educational models continue to change, we're seeing a number of newer schools, primarily online schools, in which our Minnesot students are now enrolling. This sometimes raises questions about students who are taking courses in more than one school. In response, we're re-examining our current practices related to participation and eligibility and we're considering ways to most effectively provide opportunities for students to participate. We're pleased to report the league continues in a strong financial position thanks to strong term and attendance, supportive and collaborative partners and sponsors, wise investments, and fiscal responsibility. As a result, it's very likely that this coming year's membership fees, after credits, will be the lowest in nearly 30 years. As always, our top priority remains the same, to promote and support safe, respectful, and inclusive environments for participation and competition. We want all of our high schools to provide activities and events that focus on educating our students and are free from discrimination, harassment, and marginalization. Together, we make a difference with design to amplify the voices and advance the vision of our students to ensure respectful and safe schools and environments.
It's important to feel safe because within that, you're able to perform the way you want to and you're able to give the results you want to. My personal opinion, when I'm not comfortable, I'm not giving all I can.
It takes a team of dedicated adults like you to provide the kind of programming our students deserve. That's why the league and its schools are focused on recruiting, retaining, and supporting our coaches, officials, and administrators.
As an education-based activities director, there's nobody more important than the coach or advisor for our students, whether it's in the fine arts or athletics. Because we know that each child is one caring adult away from changing their path of their life.
If you look at or listen to any successful person talk about how they got there, they never did it alone. There's always a mentor. And so we need those types of leaders in our schools today to help our young people understand what it means to be a strong, supportive person within the community.
Sometimes the most enduring lessons our students learn happen through activities beyond the classroom. So it's our goal to focus on enhancing the education of students through a broad range of opportunities to extend the traditional curriculum.
When alumni come and talk to me, the one thing I always hear is, you know, they remember those big moments, but they also remember what led up to them. Everything that they've done to prepare and how those coaches and those experiences have helped prepare them.
At the Minnesota State High School League, it's about more than membership. It's about partnership. We have seen that when our member schools commit to common principles and expectations, we all experience the benefits. The benefits that come from a shared responsibility to provide safe, respectful, and inclusive activities for all of our students.
To do our best for student athletes and participants, we need to be good partners to one another and collaborate with other schools and the Minnesota State High School League. Every single one of us has an important role to play in making sure that our students have the very best opportunities and experiences when they are participating in activities.
Nothing is more important than the well-being of our students. And participation in activities is a great way to enhance our students' overall health, both physically and mentally.
I think it's really, really important that every high school student finds something to be involved in. Finding some way to get involved in your school and in your community is so important. It not only positively benefits your mental health, but helps you improve as a person, helps you grow, helps you make connections with other people.
These activities have helped shape who I am because it makes me understand the importance of being in something. And it has helped me for the future because these activities help you gain skills such as time management and communication.
Giving students these valuable opportunities is the mission of Minnesota State High School League. And looking around the state this year, we've seen high participation numbers, packed venues, and enthusiastic support from school communities. And together, we have a bright future ahead. On behalf of the Minnesota State High School League, I thank everyone in all of our member schools for your continued active support. Because it's about more than membership, it's about partnership.
Any questions on the video?
Well, I think it's interesting they brought up online education as an issue for sports. As to, I think basically what they're saying is, which school are you in?
Yeah, there's, the percentages are out there that, which school are you in? And I know they're thinking going forward about, if you're not 50% at your home school, if you're more than 50% in online school, they're thinking that you're not going to be eligible at the school where you reside at. So for example, we've got kids who are going Houston as an online school, I believe. If they were attending that more than 50%, the child would not be able to participate at the home. So there's discussion about that, it's not for sure. But there is discussion about moving in that direction just because where do the kids lie at? So it's, where's the money going to? And that kind of stuff. So it's, it's, it's complex, to say the least.
Bruce, anything? Tina? Besska? Okay, I don't have anything, thanks. Okay, and now we're back to Superintendent Chomol.
So the video is timely, preparation and partnership. Before I move on, I just want to recognize the people that we don't always see in our classrooms that work behind the scenes and during the summer. That would be Tim Ringhofer, Tom Holt, Lisa West, Beth Slatinsky, Missy Tate, our nutrition team, to our custodial facilities team, and our clerical team. So they have been here around the clock, working hard to prepare and get things ready for the school year. So I want to recognize your efforts. You've really helped keep me sane the last month and a half, so thank you. As we move on, one of the things that our directors will be presenting is really key focus areas and how they align to our strategic plan. So the areas that I just want to highlight for this year in your board packet, and we've had this discussion, is some of the changes that I would like to propose to the 24-25 school calendar to meet some of the alignment with our school strategic plan in addition to aligning some of our schedules with the regional, region seven school districts. So for example, St. Louis County to Ely to Virginia, some of the area schools, and really getting in alignment with their schedules, their professional development time, and their spring breaks. So that proposal is being brought forth tonight in addition to our staggered start for our kindergarten group. And that is a practice that is really surfacing as something that people are finding really good research behind because you're having more time with families and students based on where their child or children are at, recognizing them under a whole child model. So it's a very valuable time versus opening the classroom door and a five-year-old has to spend a whole day, every day, in school, getting to really know your child and children and your families. The next area that I would like to briefly talk about is my school calendar proposal is also aligned to the school safety concerns that I've brought forth regarding updating our school crisis plan and our school safety model. So we will be looking at investing in the ALIS framework, which I'll talk to you a little bit more about, in addition to aligning overall continuous improvement practices that are aligned to MTSS, which those are a bunch of acronyms. It really falls under a leadership model and looking again at the whole child from social, emotional, behavioral needs to instructional practices to the overall safe and welcoming, inclusive practices of our school. The ALIS Safety Response Protocol framework that we'll be using, the acronym stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And it is everything from having what we used to know as a soft lockdown to a hard lockdown to evacuating a school site. It is something that the district staff are in need of being trained on. They are eager and excited about this. In addition, we'll also have an educational model for our families and our adults who are associated with the community and our students. The next area that we'll be working on at a district level for our strategic plan is our school and attendance framework. As you know, in part of my interview, I did talk about the concern about this school attendance for both preschools, the Alternative Learning Center, FES, and Falls High School, and some of our truancy data that's coming through in the instructional core practices that kids are missing. So missing that grade level reading in third grade or missing that grade level math in eighth grade. When those children are missing their core instruction time, research says that it takes three days for a teacher to catch them up in their missed grade level content. So that's a significant initiative that we'll be working on So that's a significant initiative that we'll be working on at a district level this next school year. Another area, and you're going to see this in the handbook tonight, is an area that will need to be continuously updated. The district is also working with the county. We are sitting on the juvenile task force, so we're talking about truancy, we're talking about attendance, we're talking about drugs, we're talking about alcohol. We're also partnering with the county truancy division. So Principal Tate and Principal West, in addition to our school social workers, are a part of this conversation. We're all sitting at the table. We're working with social workers, we're working with county workers, we're working with probation and the judge. So we have a robust team that are really focusing on this through a community effort, which I'm very appreciative of. Last, we will be implementing an educational campaign, so we're not just going to come up with this practice and this policy and drop it on families. We're going to be really working behind the scenes to update not only our staff but our families on what does grade level school attendance look like for preschoolers? What does it look like for elementary, middle school, and high school? So we'll be having conversations and reporting and sharing out with our families so they can ask questions. It'll be through modes of media, but it'll also be having the opportunity to have some focus groups where they can ask some questions or call into the school and talk to the principal or superintendent.
Good.
So the goal overall is to look at the root cause of some of our deficit areas for student achievement. And we're looking at instructional practices, we're looking at enrollment, we're looking at social, emotional wellness, and looking again at the whole child, which directly aligns to 361 Strategic Plan. The next area that I have is the referendum. The most current information that I have for you is Thursday, I am meeting with Rob Brown from Nexus, Tom Holt, in addition to the board committee that has come forth. We'll get an invite, and we will just be finding the first phase of information on what's going to happen and what we need to do from a school district perspective in long-term planning. So we're going to review that long-term maintenance plan, we're going to talk about the finance behind it, and we're going to talk about the steps to move to Phase 2. I don't have a lot of details on what that meeting will look like. It's a present option for them to come forth and let us know what's going to happen next and what we need to do as a school district. So I'm looking forward to that meeting.
Are you going to communicate the time and the place and everything else?
Everything will be virtual to start out with, but it'll be Thursday, and I think it's going to be around the lunch hour, so people can work that into their lunch schedule so we can make sure everybody has the opportunity to be there.
Okay, cool, thanks.
So as I move to barriers and problem solving, one of the things that I just want to briefly touch base on is some of the feedback that the board provided me was the technology component, how meetings were operating. So I did look into some Robert's Rules of Order training to the communication barriers that we faced with our audience online, technology not working. So we have shifted the schedule from our technology team to be present at board meetings. So when we have glitches, like we had, it's not tasked with one of us who are not tech-savvy, in addition to making sure that we don't have to not record, that we aren't stuck recording meetings and people not having the live option. Obviously, there could be some barriers. We thought we were going to have a little glitch today with an update on our computer system, but our tech team solved that, so we could livestream tonight. So the board members will be going through the baseline of Robert's Rules of Orders, so implementing and beginning on our September board meeting. We're hoping that our new microphone system will be here in addition to following the platform of what open forum looks like, how the discussion is held. It will still provide everybody the opportunity to have discussion, but how motions are made and seconded need to be following a specific protocol that we need to just adjust a little bit. So you should all have links to access that. As you know, a concern has been the staffing shortage overall, and that's not just from substitute teachers, but we're talking bus drivers to custodians to paraprofessionals. Our substitute division has been the greatest barrier that I can see in the data that's been presented. So what I've done was CISO, the financial team, is I've done a brief review of positions that we don't have held, in addition to areas that are really showing a higher need in data that we really need to revisit and maybe offering something different in regard to job opportunities with the district. So as you see new jobs come out, those are not in addition. So when you're seeing those, I want you to know they're not in addition. I have been working with CISO behind the scenes, so if we have not had something filled, so for example, could we revisit the pair schedule, or could we revisit a purchase or a practice that we've done that we could pull back to invest in an area that we'd have more opportunity to have licensed train staff on site? So as you saw today, we are going to have a one-year district-wide substitute teacher, so we will have a licensed teacher in the building versus trying to fill spots with people when we don't have enough substitute teachers on site. So I wanted to make sure that was clarified because I know that question will be asked. In addition, we're rewriting what some of the job descriptions look like. I'm working with the Workforce Center on pushing out to their media outlets for showcasing some of the jobs that we have, in addition to I'm working with the Minnesota Job Network to expand outside the area for jobs. So creative timelines, as you saw, four to six, two custodian positions. We are getting creative, hoping to offer people who maybe even are just looking for some part-time work. Our custodian team is very overloaded right now, and they're operating on short staffness, but they are champions and rising to the occasion. Last but not least, we are revisiting our transportation routes and really making sure that we're working and doing transportation that is in alignment with the state statutes, student boundaries, how can we condense routes, in addition to making sure that we are communicating and educating families that we cannot change transportation routes on a daily basis. So if a child is going to grandma's one day and daycare the next, it has, the transportation routes have to be aligned to the primary caregiver because of the safety component, in addition to the routes have to stay on target, they're aligned to times for family drop-off and pickup. So we will be communicating those updates out to the families. Last, the other area, I know that the board wanted an update on our water situation. The email did come out, we did have some faucets in our district that showed some levels of lead. I want you to know that Director Holt and I have taken that position very seriously. We are working with the company. Director Holt has put in new filters, did I get that right? I'm not a director of facilities. The faucets that were highlighted within the district all have new filters in them per direction of the company. We are to use those filters, get the water flowing because the school has sat idle for the summer. They will come up this week to retest all of the faucets. Once we know those findings, you will have an email that Director Holt and I will push out to you. They think that we'll have pretty good results from that. If there are any concerns, then we'll have to bring in the safety team that we're developing, and we'll have to make a decision on next steps on what we may need to invest in. So those projects and facilities that come up, that's what we sit on that money for because sometimes things, emergencies happen, and we're taking this very seriously and hope to have it rectified before school starts.
Okay.
That is everything.
Okay, we'll start on this, and Jessica, do you have any questions? Tina?
No.
Bruce?
No.
Tom?
Okay.
Okay, I have one, and that is would be related to the substitute teachers. I think I heard another person that felt maybe a little more of it too. Can you elaborate a little bit on your comment about the substitute teachers?
I can. So one of the principals and I meet neatly, and we talk about areas, you know, that are challenging and areas that we do have concern over. And one of the areas that we continuously talk about is the best academic experience for our students. And though we have some incredible subs, we want to make sure that we know on an average, when you look at the average, we are short one to two subs a day. And this is not International Falls specific, this is across the country. We're short bus drivers, we're short teachers. So when we looked at that information, we really felt that we needed to revisit the practices of what the students are experiencing in our classroom, and we really narrowed it down to core math and reading. So it is not easy for someone to come in and teach a math lesson, especially when you're looking at fourth grade and beyond. Math looks very different than when I went to school. So we really felt that was a priority for us to really start seeking a position where A) we had a licensed teacher, but B) we prefer somebody who has possibly a math background, a language background. But that's an area, we want that teacher to be able to walk into the classroom, and if they are in eighth grade math or a third grade classroom, that they can walk into that lesson with confidence, knowing that our students are going to experience high level of teaching and learning. Thank you.
So can I ask one question in addition to that?
Sure.
With the same subject, but so will that person just be like, be here and then every day get assigned to where they're needed?
Yes, so the priority will be very specific content areas. So if we need a math teacher, that is where that individual will go. Now, if we don't need that teacher in one of those very specified areas, then we will field that out based on the greatest need. So maybe we're short two teachers in second grade. Well, we definitely want to send that teacher there, so we will narrow it down based on the highest priority.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
And it is a one, just a one here, for trial.
Okay. Okay. And now we move on to the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
A motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now we're going to move to the action items under the concept of improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. We first have Resolution A, 1A, Resolution of Acceptance of Gifts. Sorry, I should have had that, there it is. An acceptance of gifts and donations, and... Do I have it?
Is it not in there?
Does anyone have a copy of the Resolution of Acceptance of Gifts?
I do.
Oh, thanks.
Sorry about that.
Whereas the School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, and whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, the school board may accept a gift, grant, or advise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. The Falls Rec Hockey, $15,000 for the arena sound system donation. We had the motion, we have the second, so now we need to have all those in favor.
Didn't have a motion accepted.
Yes, we did. Didn't we have a motion in the second?
No, just to accept the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did. Okay, motion? May I ask for a motion?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Joanne.
And now we're going to 1B, which is the adoption of resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. This one, I don't think I have to read the entire thing. So what we're going to do here is, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So for school board candidates, you have five individuals who will be on the ballot.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We now look at, I'm going to move these papers out of the way, we now look at 1C to approve the 2024-2025 Falls High School Student Handbook. May I have a motion?
We're going to just review the highlighted areas in the event you have any questions.
Okay. You're going to do that after we have the second?
We're going to make a motion first.
Yep, and then we'll do the...
Okay. So did we get our motion?
No. All in.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, and now, go ahead. Principal West is going to go through that?
Yes.
No.
I'll list up them. Fingers crossed, one more time.
Yay. Okay. So Falls High School Handbook. I just thought I would link in to the proposed changes, which are highlighted in yellow. And just know that we are still working on updating the table of contents to get the page numbers correct, should the changes be approved. We have some changes here, some staffing changes.
Stop right there.
So...
Stacy Grover was still on the list, the phone list.
Oh, on the phone list?
Yep.
Okay. We will...
The copy that we got in the email?
Okay.
Vicky Hayes is correcting all of the...
Yeah, and the one that you received, she was working on it late this afternoon.
Okay.
So this might be different than yours, and so they're working on embedding all those updates.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it's not bad.
Yeah. And then you'll notice the, this is the new calendar, so that is, oops. Oops, on that. Okay. So you'll notice that. And then just a few little verbiage changes, just making sure that parent, attendance is the one thing that we're still going to be working on, so that might come to you later in the year as attendance policy is refined and revised. For right now, we've just added that parents are notified by nine o'clock with a phone message if their student is absent. So we'll be looking at that as we go. So the next section, we just talked a little bit about detention, ISS, we just kind of shorted up some of those policies. One of the big things is removal from class, and the legislature has really given a lot of guidance on what they want to see if a student is removed from class. So we have just really fine-tuned how that will work, that if there's an issue going on, you know, we will lay out those expectations of, you know, hopefully the teacher will be handling a conflict in the classroom. We highly encourage it, we'll offer support, we'll offer suggestions and ideas. If there's a situation where a student does have to be removed for some reason, Mr. Rolando or myself will go and get the student, escort the student down for just a de-escalation time, and then we will work through it, and then the teacher will call home. So we want to continue to work on establishing that homeschool connection involving parents and having those conversations into the root cause of some of the problems. Hopefully, we can keep them from, you know, growing into bigger things. So that removal from class is a change, a pretty big change. And then I'm just going to scroll through, no changes here. Electronic and cell phone policy. This is a big, I wouldn't say a big change, I think ISD 361 has really had a pretty robust cell phone policy for some time, but I think the challenging part has been enforcing it. And, you know, it's really been, really been tough. So we have just revised a few things to help support teachers in enforcing it, and then also we hope to do a lot of campaigning with parents as well, communicating with them, helping to educate them as to what we're planning to do and get their support with it as well. So we have it laid out, and you'll see this a little bit closer up in your copy, that for grades nine through 12, they can have their cell phones before school, after school, in between classes. Of course, part of our job is helping them to manage this technology that we all have access to. We're not going to ban it, but we are going to say during instructional time, bell to bell, when they get in their classroom, till the bell rings and they leave their classroom, no cell phones, period, for everyone across the board. If we're all consistent, if kids really know we mean it, we tell them why, we explain. There's a lot of research showing that it's really affecting their learning, it's affecting their mental health. There's a lot of evidence now that this is a real problem, and so we have to help teach them and lead them. So we have an organization that will provide lock boxes, some of the teachers use them already, but they will have those available in their classrooms. And then we have a policy and procedure that we feel will be really helpful to support teachers in enforcing the policy. So, and, so you can read through that. Dress code, we just added a little bit of verbiage about distractions, we added no blankets or flanks as coverings. We're seeing a lot of... We're seeing a lot of blankets coming in, and we just want to, you know, yeah, do away with those.
Leave it at your bed.
Yeah. So, and then we really have a lot of parent guardian contacted. There's going to be a lot of verbiage, because we're going to really make an effort to, you know, that's the first thing that happens before we have any write-ups happening, before we have any report, parents need to know right away what's going on, bring them in to the conversation, make them part of the solution, and working together. So, so you'll notice some of that. And then we have added some things with academic honesty. Again, with the event of, with AI being used, we are just adding some verbiage in and, you know, shoring up the academic honesty, honesty policy to include some AI verbiage. And then also having the broader conversation with teachers that, you know, we need to really, you have to teach our kids that this is a tool. It's a tool, it's out there. So how do we use it appropriately? And then how do we do citations? If we're using something that isn't ours, teach them how to cite it properly so they're not plagiarizing, you know, so that's going to be a big push as well. Student journalism and expression, this is legislation, this has to be in handbooks, just about making sure that students have the right to freedom of speech, freedom of the press, in-school sponsored media, with exceptions for speech that is defamatory, profane, insulting, harassing, and such. So that verbiage came right from the legislation. And I think, this, we added a little bit of verbiage in, we do have 11th and 12th graders that are allowed to leave campus for open lunch. What happens with 10th graders when they get their driver's license is they think they can leave for lunch too. And so that's been hard, because they just have this freedom, this newfound freedom. So what we're asking, and we're going to make it really clear with parents and also the 10th graders, that, you know, you have to, number one, have to have parent permission, and we are going to have them sign out. We're going to have them stop in the office, and if they have permission to leave campus for lunch, someone's picking them up, and we have parent permission. They have to sign out, because then we can track when they're in and out of the building. It's really hard during lunchtime. So we're going to advertise that one a lot. And then I think that is really about it.
Okay. We'll start on this end. Jessica, do you have anything?
Nope, I read through it and it looks good.
Okay. Tina?
No.
Bruce?
I applaud you on addressing the cell phone issue.
Yes.
I think we have sent a strong message to our teachers that not only will the student be disciplined, the teacher will be disciplined if they're not following through.
Dale?
Just on the cell phone issue, shouldn't there be an app for that?
There should.
Tony?
I'm, I'm excited about the attendance policy and how it's going to change. I have some stuff to work on, but I had some issues with the 9:00 AM check-in just because of the younger kids, they were worried about, you know, why am I not hearing about it until nine? And so I'm excited to see what comes out with that.
Joanne?
Looks good.
I just have one thing, and I just noted that on the website, it said parent teacher, or meet the teacher at the high school is the 29th instead of the 28th. And I wonder if it's because we hadn't gotten the approval yet, so you're going to change it.
So that is, I think that's a mistake.
Okay.
So...
All right. Just, okay, great.
We'll make sure to get that changed.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now we have a motion to introduce the Falls Elementary Student Handbook.
A motion.
I'll second.
Principal T?
There really isn't too much for changes in our handbook. Because now I've been doing this for a little bit, so there, it's kind of, this isn't touchscreen. So the first change obviously is the calendar. We'll insert the new calendar because we, I was just waiting to make sure it was approved, and so we'll put in the new calendar once that, once that's created, that will go in there. There will be a change. And then, you know, as Beth and Lisa both said, we'll continue to look at the attendance over the school year and probably revise some of the things in here, but that would be, we want more time to kind of make sure that's a robust plan, and we have time to communicate to parents. So we'll probably start likely with what is in here, maybe a few minor tweaks. But the biggest change in our handbook honestly is just for dismissal. We used to separate our kids at the end of the day for parent pickup, like we would do A through M at the staff lot, and then N through Z was in the arena lot. And we really just want to make that safer for our families. It just, in the arena parking lot, it's, there's really not a good, efficient way to really direct that traffic every day. Like you would have to get staff to go out there and put cones every day, and then they probably still wouldn't follow the directions of the cones. So it's just, we really want to increase student safety, so we're going to just all go to the staff parking lot. And when we first start, it probably will take a little bit longer, and the lines will be kind of long, but once we get rolling, it goes pretty fast. So we just need parents to work with us and follow those rules. Like we ask parents, please don't get out of your car and come up and get your child, because that just takes longer too. Like, we'll have the signs in their car, like they do, they drive up. I mean, we have a pretty slick system where they just call in the walkie-talkie. We have a couple of pairs inside, and they're getting their kids and getting them outside. So it really works slick as long as everybody stays in their car. It's when they start parking other places and walking up, and then you have to attend to these parents who are not following, and then you have the parents waiting here. And so that really just makes everything take longer. So if everybody just comes, gets in that line, it will look like it's going to take an eternity when you first see it, but it really does go so fast. Like, we are done with parent pickup before buses even start picking up. So it's really slick, it's really fast.
What, do they put like a name placard in their car?
So they have like a little laminated color coded by grade, and then we just put their last name on that, so they just put it in their window. And, you know, by the end of the year, we know the parents were picking up.
Sure.
So it works pretty smoothly. I already talked about attendance changing. Really, I mean, those are really the only changes that are coming in our handbook. Everything else is really kind of staying the same, so...
Okay. Tony? Sorry, Joanne? Tony? Dale? Tina? Jessica? Okay, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, the handbook. And now we have, may I have a motion to introduce the 2024-2025 Activities Student Handbook?
I'll make that motion. A second.
Okay, who's going to do that?
Yeah, just a few minor changes. Page 12 had the Activities Director can be, rather than the form having to be the only way to be able to get your kid off the bus or to take them home with you. Last year, we started having them contacting me via text message, email, phone call. So I added that in there, that, that was part of the deal. It seems to work in this day and age, that's what it does. I make the list, tablet, and just put everybody's name on there, what date, and then just go from there. So we have that. I asked all the coaches if they wanted to change their lettering criteria. Boy swimming and diving was the only one, so that was a change on page 15. And then on page 16, there was just a few, excuse me, things that were out of line, not lined up, missed the word "the," and there's so... And then hockey cheerleading, having eight competitors. I talked with Katte Holt, who was the advisor last year, and she was kind of wondering why it was nine, and I asked her, well, why was it eight? And she said, well, because when you go to the state tournament, you get seven cheerleaders, and you get one mascot. So rather than having nine, and then if the team goes to state, you gotta leave somebody behind, they're not on the list. We decided that we would go with eight there, so there'd be, the eight of them, one would have to become the mascot from there, so... And then Joanne saw a couple names at the end of the document that weren't corrected, like that were superintendented principals, so... Sorry, ladies. Minor. Other than that, no other changes to the Activities Handbook.
Okay, discussion, Jessica?
Tina?
No.
Bruce?
Dale?
Tom?
No.
I don't have anything. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now we're going to, could I have a motion to introduce the proposal for the updated 2024 to 2025 school calendar?
I'll move.
I'll second.
So I will just give you a brief update. You are very aware of the calendar changes that I proposed. We are still in the instructional minute guideline. In addition to Missy and Lisa and I are working behind the scenes on developing our snow days platform for out-of-school instruction, which there will be out-of-school instruction on snow days for our kids and how they will access it. We also look at the state grid start, in addition to really being on the staying timeline for finishing our, our school days. We are embedding a few more PD days to prepare for our school safety plan, in addition to the proposal of spring break into our plan. We are in basic alignment with region seven schools, and that is the proposal I would like to offer for a one-year change to try and see how it goes, and then we'll gather some feedback on it.
Okay. Questions? Jessica? Tina? Bruce? Dale? Tony? Joanne? Okay, I don't have anything. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we now have one more, and that is, could I have a motion to approve the, or to, for me to present the referendum vote findings?
I'll make that motion. A second.
And... I don't know if you all have copies, but... Okay. So the summary of the totals for the school referendum, that was on August 13th of 2024. Oh, I think I'm supposed to, I better read this really word for word. The abstract of votes cast, Independent School District Number 361, International Falls, State of Minnesota at the state primary, held Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, compiled from the official returns. Okay. School district question number one, yes, was 1,097. No, was 823. School district question number two, yes, was 972. No, was 917. Okay. Now, the school district, the, the detail of the election results were, under East Ward, International Falls, East Ward, yes was 153. No was 133. West, I mean Center Ward, yes was 137. No was 127. West Ward, yes was 341. No was 182. Kooch Pole, one, yes was 174. No was 95. Kooching Pole, two, yes was 54. No was 52. Kooching Pole, four, yes was 75. No was 49. Kooching Pole, five, yes was 38. No was 35. Rainier, yes, or, yes was 30. No was 19. Rainier Pole, West, was, yes was 46, and no was 39. Central Kooching, yes was 49, and no was 92. So that's where we got our totals. Now that was, now for question two, we go through, East Ward, yes was 133. No was 144. Center Ward, yes was 125. No was 136. West Ward, yes was 304. No was 202. Kooch Pole, one, yes was 164. No was 106. Kooch Pole, two, I hope I, did I say two last time? Anyway, one was last time. Kooch Pole, two, yes was 47. No was 59. Kooch Pole, four, yes was 64. No was 60. Kooch Pole, five, yes was 33. No was 39. Rainier East, yes was 25. No was 24. Rainier West, yes was 38. No was 46. Central Kooch, yes was 39. No was 101. And so now, may I, oh, is there any discussion? We'll start on this end. Jessica? Tina?
No.
Bruce? Dale?
No.
Again, we just want to echo everybody, like the thank you that everybody's been giving on all this, the voters, the support behind it, everybody's been awesome.
Joanne? Yep, I echo that, thanks, everyone for that referendum.
Or for the books that each, you'll need to read, page four at the top before it's voted on.
Okay. We, the school board members of Independent School District 361, International Falls, certify that we have candid this, the returns of the state primary held on Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, and have herein specified the names of any candidates receiving votes and the number of votes received by each candidate, and have herein specified the number of votes for and against any ballot questions voted on in this election. As it appears by the returns of the election precincts voting in this election, duly returned, filed, opened, and canvassed, and now remaining unfiled in the office of the Clerk of Independent School District Number 361, International Falls. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, and so people will need to sign here.
So board members, if you can take your last two pages of the forms that I've given you from the county, put them on the top, then at the very end, when we're adjourned, we'll go through and we'll sign them all. We have to send you them to the number of...
Just one copy.
Oh.
Those are open.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, adjourned, thank you.